There we go. It's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, February 6th. Our first on the agenda is a public hearing. Kim, would you read the notice, please?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by Wesley Winters, 81 Pearl Street, Batavia, New York, to add a third apartment to an existing structure in the Hamlet Commercial District at 8591 Slusher Road, Batavia, New York. Tax map 6 dot dash one dash 48. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 6, 2024, at the Batavia Town Hall at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. You may email the chairman@kjazinski@townofbatavia.com or text 219-9190. By order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Thank you. So the public hearing is open, but Mr. Winters, the applicant, is not here yet, and I don't see anyone in the -- is anyone here to speak on this public hearing? Now, I'm going to leave it open. We're going to continue with our agenda and leave it open. If someone comes, we will give them the opportunity to speak. So now I will call the regular planning board meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge to the flag. The flag is right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Kim?
Palmer Casey. Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Brooks Holly.
Here.
Brittany Whitcup. Michael Dana. Kathy.
We won't need our alternate members. We do have enough for a quorum, so we'll go on with the meeting now. Did everyone read the minutes from the last meeting of January 16th?
I'd like your motion to approve.
There's a motion by Paul McCullough. There's a second by Brooks Holly. Any additions or corrections? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we have public comment and agenda items. This is the opportunity for anyone that wishes to speak, and something that we are going to deal with tonight. Right now, I don't believe there is anyone from the public that wishes to speak. We have people here for our later presentations. So skipping through Mr. Winters, we'll go to a presentation by Matt Fitzgerald. Matt's an attorney with Lidle --
Phillips Lidle.
Phillips Lidle.
Yeah, right.
And he's helping us with the seeker. Long would let him tell a little bit about himself and what he's doing.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Matt Fitzgerald.
And thank you, members of the planning board. So my name is Matt Fitzgerald. I'm attorney with Phillips Lidle. I'm here to represent the planning board and assist in the seeker review for two projects that are moving forward pretty much simultaneously, both located in the Ag Park. So why, right? What's so special about the Ag Park? What's special about the Ag Park is that, oh, probably about 15 years ago, the planning board issued a generic environmental impact statement for the Ag Park. That's how you comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. You went through a generic environmental impact statement process. That is what I work on day in, day out, for developers, for municipalities, for towns, villages, counties, and everything in between, working on the seeker process and on land use approvals and entitlements. So my role here is to assist you in terms of the process, in terms of how to move these projects forward, and to how to structure the seeker review under a generic environmental impact statement. With the board's permission, what I'd like to do is just give a very quick overview of the GEIS process, what that looks like, and what I would recommend as the next step to move forward formally with seeker for both the HP Hood project as well as the CH4 Biogas project. So with the board's permission, unless if you feel that you're experts in the GEIS process and seeker, obviously, I can stop now, but so --
We welcome your presentation.
With the nods I'm getting, I'll continue. So a generic environmental impact statement, what is it? It's a document that is prepared that takes quite a amount of time. For any of the board members who may have been on the board at the time this was done, you may recall that this isn't something that's done in a week, right? This is a process that incorporates public feedback. It's a process that starts off when a positive declaration under seeker is issued, where you say, you're looking at a project like the Ag Park, and you say, "The development of the Ag Park may result in some significant adverse environmental impacts." But we don't know exactly how the Ag Park is going to be developed out. We only conceptually understand various tenants are going to come in, various projects are going to develop over time. This is something that could take a decade, two decades, to flesh out fully. We don't really know what it is. It's not like we have one single tenant proposing to come in. That's why it's called a generic environmental impact statement. In seeker, you can have an environmental impact statement for a specific project, for a series of projects. Here, it's generic. You didn't know whether or not HP Hood or CH4 Biogas were going to be coming in and applying for permits to build in this park at the time. So that's the purpose of a GEIS. In a GEIS, what you do is you analyze a broad range of potential impacts. The way I always liken it is you build a box. You say, okay, there's this box that we're going to define. It's going to be this many megawatts of power, this many hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, this much traffic, these many employees. And any project that fits in this box and doesn't have impacts that are outside of the box that we didn't think about back then is going to be consistent with what we analyzed in the GEIS. And so that's what you're doing when you're analyzing projects. You're looking at the GEIS and the finding statement that was issued, and you're saying, okay, how does this project fit into the box that we previously created? So there are four options when you're reviewing a project. You could look at it and say, this is exactly what we envisioned when we did the GEIS. Meets all the thresholds, no questions, no problems. Then you'd issue a consistency determination. You would say, this project is consistent with the GEIS. Nothing more to be done here. Here's the reasons why it's consistent. You would lay it out in writing. That's the end of your seeker process. Option two, you look at it and you say, you know, it's not what we really envisioned in the finding statement, but none of the impacts are different from what we analyzed in the GEIS. They're all adequately accounted for, so we're going to amend our finding statement to encompass this new project. That's option two, issuing an amended finding statement. Option three, you look at this and you say, you know, this isn't at all what we envisioned when we did the GEIS. This project doesn't really fit within it, and we didn't account for the potential impacts. Then you got two options from there. You can say, even though we didn't account for it, none of the impacts are significant. So you issue a negative declaration, just like if you were doing seeker on any normal project outside of the GEIS context. You issue a negative declaration or a positive declaration. Same thing when you're in the GEIS world and you've got a project that's totally outside the bounds of both the finding statement and the GEIS. You say, you know what? The applicant submitted enough information to show no significant adverse impacts. Negative declaration, end of seeker. Well, what happens if you get a project that is outside the bounds of the finding statement? It's outside the bounds of what you analyzed in the GEIS, and you think it's going to cause significant adverse environmental impacts? In that case, you'd issue another positive declaration, and you do a supplemental generic environmental impact statement. It's doing the GEIS all over again, but in a limited scope, narrowed to only those issues that you identify as new significant adverse impacts. So if you already analyzed traffic and the project is within the bounds of traffic, you're not going to look at that. But if you look at something new the project is doing and saying, wow, that's a new problem that we didn't analyze, and it's going to be significant, then you can issue a positive declaration and do a limited scope supplemental generic environmental impact statement targeted at that. That is a process. It is identical to the process you would have done when you did the generic environmental impact statement all those years ago. If we get to a point where we're discussing that, we'll get into more detail. In terms of procedure, you've got those four options in front of you. How do you get to the point where you're ready to make that decision? I know that on both these projects, applications are before the board. There's some information that's out there already. In some cases, there's quite a bit of information. The next procedural step that I recommend you take is to authorize staff and council, me, to distribute a notice to all of the interested and involved agencies. So that's any other municipal boards that may have approval authority. It's the DEC, for example. It is the county. It is all of the other agencies involved to send them a notice to say, the planning board is evaluating these projects. We're reestablishing ourselves as lead agency. You have 30 days to let us know if you have any comments or questions or concerns on these projects. So legally, that's the right step to take. Practically, it also helps you get all of the feedback that you may want. There's nothing worse than you're working on a project, working on a project, you're two years down the line, and then the DEC comes in and tells you, there's no way this will ever be permissible. There's all these problems. We wish we had known that two years ago. This is how you ferret out those comments now. So all of that will be a part of your record. In the meantime, we'll work with town staff in order to gather up, does the town have any questions? Do you have any comments, questions, or concerns that we should be relaying to the applicant? And at the end of this, we relay all that to the applicant, get their response, and then we go from there. So that would be the next step, is we send out that notice. The 30-day clock starts to run for the comments to come in. We receive them, we compile them, we get them over to the applicant along with the town's concerns, and we move forward. So with that, I know that was a lot, it's a complicated topic, a lot of history on the Ag Park, but any questions from the board that I can answer right now? And if not, if you think of a question later, you can feel free to reach out to me individually.
Are you handling the two projects separately or together?
Good question. The short answer is, is separately, but at the same time. So because you have a GEIS, you can look at them separately in the context of the GEIS. If they were two projects and there was no GEIS, we'd have to look at them together. Otherwise, we'd be segmenting them from each other, which is impermissible. Now, we're doing them in the context of one another. Obviously, one's an existing project, so there are existing impacts associated with that project that are already out there and accounted for. But they will be separate, to the extent that causes any confusion or concerns, we can walk through it, but they will be separately reviewed for the seeker process.
Thank you. Board members, questions?
So we're not at build out for the Ag Park with either of these projects. So do we have to go through this process every time, or is there a point that we could kind of redefine the parameters of that box?
The way you would re -- yeah, so great question. The way you could redefine the parameters of the box is, there's really two ways. One is, is if the underlying environmental information allows you to make a rational finding on this, you could amend your finding statement and say, you know what? In the GEI, you know, in our finding statement, we said, we'll have traffic trips up to X number, but we realize now we can actually support X plus 1,000 trips, right? You can amend that information to increase those thresholds to reflect the current reality. And there's various ways you can go about doing that, depending on what kind of threshold you're talking about. The other way to do it would be to say that we're going to issue a supplemental generic environmental impact statement to capture certain increases that we now want to analyze. So you would work through this exercise for every project in the Ag Park going forward. At some point, the Ag Park will be built out, and your seeker for that will be done, right? But in the meantime, unless and until you have to change a threshold, that's how you'd work through it. And even, and I just want to be clear on this, even if a threshold has to change, that doesn't mean you have to do the supplemental process. If the threshold changes, but you can say that there's no significant adverse impact associated with that threshold changing, you just amend your finding statement and move forward, or issue a negative declaration, depending on the underlying environmental information. And my job here is to help explain those things to you, those processes, those steps, as the information gets laid out and we can do that analysis. All right, thank you. Unless the board has any other questions, I'm happy to turn it back over.
What I will do is give them your email address, and if they have questions, sometimes you have to go home and think about it.
Yes.
And I'll let them, I just copy me if you send letters in to Matt.
So are we at the point where we could authorize you to notify the other stakeholders that we're going to reseek lead agency, or is that something that you need more information from developers?
You can absolutely move forward with that step at this point. And that is what I'd recommend you do at this point, is authorize us to go ahead and do that, and we'll get those notifications out, and then that really, I know there's been work going on previously in the applications, but that formally kicks off the process for us to move this forward.
So that would be a separate process? Us requesting lead agency is separate from you telling them about the project?
So we do it, the way we handle it is, it's all one and the same. If you were to authorize me to move forward tonight, I would send out the notice, which does both at the same time. It notifies them of the project and puts them on notice that you're seeking to reestablish yourself as lead agency for the project.
Sounds like the best way to do it.
That's what I would recommend.
I guess from an engineering standpoint, I know we've talked about Genesee Biogas, but we haven't really talked about HP Hood build out. Is there any concerns with increasing those thresholds that would have to be increased?
Yeah, and that's really wild, why that projects, you know, before the planning board, because it's both water, wastewater, traffic appears to be inside of the limits, but as Matt mentioned, until you get the information out to all the involved and interested agencies, they may come back with something that we hadn't thought of, or, and this is all being done also, again, you know, both for, you know, the town's purpose, but also the developers, make sure procedurally we're doing everything right so that, you know, once you make a decision, you know, somebody is less apt to challenge something. But we have lots of information on both.
We have some representatives from Biogas here. Do you have any questions from Mr. Fitzgerald?
So many questions. No, I'm just kidding. But yeah, thank you for that overview. This is a complicated process with lots of steps. So it sounds like you're asking for the authorization, so then, and the 30 days. So then, when would that go out? When is that, that would go out, when would that, when would that go out to start the clock on the 30 days?
It's a good question. It'd be quickly after receipt of authorization. I can't get the mailings out tonight, let's put it that way. But it would be, I would aim to get them out this week, and as soon as they hit the, you know, the outback, so to speak, that's when the 30-day clock will start to run for the agencies to respond.
You know, that's very critical to us, because we've fortunately been awarded grants from New York State and NYSERDA and Empire State Development. But of course, they're all tied to milestones, and so the financing is all contingent on how the process is going and how quickly the process is going. So we appreciate this board and your intention at getting it through the process as quickly as possible, because that will certainly help with the financing and keep all the entities at New York State and all their reporting needs at bay for a little bit longer, which is helpful. I did want to reiterate, too, that we, and it sounds like you haven't quite gotten into the details of all the information that we provided this board and Steve and his team in the county in the fall. I guess we'd spent a significant engineering time with Sarah Gilbert, whom you've all had here presented, to look at this generic impact statement and how our project, also given its relative size, is well below the thresholds. And so we're anticipating a consistent declaration on this and hoping that that will also help to expedite this process. When do you think you'll be able to make that kind of a determination? Or do you think, it would be the end of the 30 days, or you'll be able to provide us some feedback along the way? How does it work?
What I would say on behalf of the board is that the timing is dependent on a lot of different things. I know that the board is interested in moving this forward in a manner that's efficient and appropriate. I just don't, I don't want to say, it could be anywhere from the meeting after the 30 days to two years out, because it totally depends on a consistency determination versus supplemental GEIS. So there's a very broad window, but in 30 days, we'll have a much better sense of where we stand, because we'll have comments in from the agencies and things like that. So all I can say at this point is, is it's, we've got a path for the next 30 days, and then what comes after that will ultimately be up to the board, but there's a lot of analysis that's going to happen at that time that's going to inform that schedule.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll work with your council as well in terms of how that was --
Yeah, that would be great, thank you. And she had intended to be here, but something came up last minute, so apologies for that. And then, at the end of the 30 days, do we reconvene at a meeting like this? And you present, or how do you get the comments back to us? Or what happens at the end of the 30 days?
Sure, so the structure of that is pretty flexible. The board, any decision that the board would make would happen at a regularly scheduled board meeting, open to the public. In terms of the schedule, I'll have to look at the schedule of the planning board versus that 30-day clock and when that runs. It's very unusual for agencies to request any kind of extension of that. In the time I've been doing this, I've actually only seen it happen once, so I wouldn't anticipate that happening here, unless it's the DEC requesting that again. But again, I've only ever seen that happen once. So I'll look at the planning board's schedule. In terms of the communication, we'll work with Steve and other town staff to get that over to you. That doesn't need to be, doesn't have to be something that's formally presented at a board, although it may be something that the board wants to run through in a board session before the comments go out to you. So we're going to play that by ear, I'll say, between now and when that happens. But again, I'm in contact with your council, be sure to keep you in the loop.
No, thank you very much for addressing this. It's very complicated, but we appreciate your time and focus on this, and the board's time and focus on moving it forward. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, and thank you all for attending. Whenever we're together, we see a better result, so this is good. And right now, I would entertain a motion to authorize, the formal name is Matt Fitzgerald, attorney?
Matt Fitzgerald, counsel to the planning board, whatever you want to call me.
Okay, to seek lead agency for us, for the project. The name of the project is?
I would say it would be HP Hood as well as CH4 Biogas, so.
Okay. You got that, Kim? Okay. Okay, motion by John Long, is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul McCullough, second. Roll call, please.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, did we finish all our business? It was a lot. It was very interesting, and we really appreciate it.
I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions as we go through the process, but absolutely. That's what I'm here for, so feel free to reach out, whether it's in a board meeting or, once you get my emails, I'm around, don't hesitate to reach out.
And any questions that people have, like instead of sending to me, I'll let Steve and John know and Matt, and everyone will know what everyone's talking about if they wanted to put their two cents in, okay? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, or we'll be in touch with you.
That sounds good. I'll wait out the meeting just in case anyone thinks of anything in the meantime, but feel free to get in.
So now, I have two things to do. And we opened the public hearing for Mr. Winters, and first, I forgot to announce that we had two public hearings scheduled for today. One of the public hearings, Jason Bonsignore is not going to continue with his application. He is putting in a different application. We would have to have a different public hearing. So that is why we did not schedule his public hearing for tonight. It has been canceled. Now, to go on with Mr. Winters, we did open yours. There's no one from the public that wishes to speak, but would you like to just say a few words about your project? Because this is being videotaped, and some people may be interested, and they'll watch it later.
Okay.
Do you mind just standing up? You can stand up right where you are and just tell them what your project is and what you're asking for a special use permit.
Okay, the actual permit is to go from two requests, is to go from two residents in the building right now to three. The project itself is kind of partly sentimental, but it's mostly, my parents bought the project, the property in the 70s, and my father, after he passed it, became my mother's. I bought it from her. We've had two apartments in there since 1975. As a matter of fact, my wife and I shared the first one when we got married. Ultimately, I wanted to have one more in there. The goal of us is to not have much look any different than what you see today, because all the entryways and parking and all that have already been accommodated for, and ultimately, but honestly, there's a lot of people that don't even know there's apartments in there right now. So the goal is to have three apartments in there, ultimately mostly because right now it's been limping along cost-wise and building-wise and such, and, you know, I want to have it continue. My goal is to have it look the same way for 50 more years in the future. I mean, that's kind of where it sums up to. Any questions?
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Yes.
Just want to go back to parking again. I know there's an entrance to the apartment on Slusher Road. Just want to make sure there's no parking on that side, because that's a right-of-way. It's all in the back.
Yep. As a matter of fact, I amended the application, and it's on file.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, what does your staff recommend?
I recommend, as far as staff review, everything is in line with our zoning code, so that's the biggest precursor to moving forward. But like Mr. Winters stated, it's been in operation with the two units for years now. A lot of people aren't even aware that it is a residential unit, but we don't have any issues.
Do we have to do a site plan review?
Yes. So then, yeah, so.
And it's a site plan that Mr. Winters already sent, you sent to us?
Correct. So this is a site plan review and technically a special use permit in combination.
Chairman.
Yes.
I move the closing of the public hearing.
Good idea, thank you. Okay, it's now 7:30?
Do you need a second?
Oh, a second. Paul McCullough. To close, you caught me off guard. To close the public meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, meeting is closed. Now we can take action on your, on your application. The county planning passed this. They approved it with some modifications. They said to eliminate the parking spots 10 and 11, which I suppose go there on the Slusher Road, and they obtained, that you obtain approval and documentation from the Genesee County Health Department regarding the adequacy of the septic system for the additional unit. With these required modifications, the residential use should pose no significant county-wide or inner community impact. So now I would entertain a motion on the site plan. You all had a chance to look at it, it was sent to you.
Did you get Health Department concurrence that the septic's adequate for three units?
They sent over the original design approval for that system, and it was designed for three units.
Okay.
They didn't per se give a confirmation of that, but we reviewed it.
Okay.
So as far as you're concerned, he's okay to go. Now, would you recommend anything for the special use permit? I don't know that we've done a special use permit on three apartments.
I don't have any recommendations as far as supplemental requirements.
But you recommend approval, because he meets everything.
Yeah, like I said, he does meet the zoning code. Obviously, through construction, we're going to also address the building code going forward, but zoning-wise, it meets all that criteria.
And Steve, you agree?
Yeah, really is a, very, site-wise or anything else, it's low impact, it's only adding one apartment, and, you know, I guess the zoning code required it under the --
Yeah, exactly. And I mentioned at the last meeting, it seems kind of maybe like a small project to come for a special use permit, but because it just steps up into that third apartment with the building code and also our zoning code kind of indicating that that requires a site plan, a site plan review and special use permit for that Hamlet residential commercial area.
Okay, and you understand that? Okay, a special use permit can be checked annually, and if something doesn't meet the code or the zoning, they will bring it to your attention, okay? So now we've got two resolutions. One is to approve the site plan review, which meets all of the town's regulations.
Motion for approval, site plan that's submitted.
Motion for site plan by John Long, is there a second? Brooks Holly? Roll call, please.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, now we have the special use permit, and apparently, as long as you're meeting everything for the town, we have anything to add to a special use permit? Apparently not?
No.
Okay, I entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Don Cartridge?
Second.
Second by Paul McCullough? Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay. It looks like... Do you have any questions for us?
Excuse me, I think I'll probably start working with Matt with the next step. I know there's these and stuff like that. I don't know those stuff yet.
Good luck.
Yes, good luck, thank you. And it really does look nice.
But good luck with your project.
Thank you. Okay, moving along with our agenda now, we have zoning enforcement officer report.
Right now, we don't have any new projects to discuss. We're just met this morning, actually. We're looking to consolidate our files on all the solar projects that have come to the town. So we have that data more readily available and able to access for any future projects coming along.
Do we have anything to prepare for for the next meeting? Any projects coming up that need our attention?
No, we don't, and we have passed the county's deadline, so we don't... No further applications could be reviewed at this time.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, now the chairman report. The only thing I have, first of all, thank you to everyone who came tonight. We had some sickness, and I wasn't sure on the form, it worked out fine. Thank you all. And second of all, Sharon McQuitty made a presentation to us at last meeting, or two meetings ago, and she's kind of looking for an answer. So I'd like you to go home, read her information, decide what you want to do because we need to put an end to it, and we need to tell the town board what we think. And what you think might be leave alone, what you think might be supportive, I don't know. We'll talk about it at the next meeting. I'd like you just to get as much information as you can so that you can give us your opinions, okay? Now, it sounds like there's not a lot on. We may not have a meeting next time, but I'm not sure. I'll have to meet with Steve and find out if there's anything else going on.
Yeah, I'll check with Ann, too, but right now, it doesn't appear to be.
Okay. Okay.
Kathy, just so you know, Paul and I will not be here for the March 19th meeting. I just want it out there for everybody to know. So Don graciously said he'd be my secretary for that night.
Okay, everybody's aware of that.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Where are you going to... Oh, don't tell me where you're going on vacation. I hope you enjoy it. And next to the adjournment, yes, who make a motion? John made a motion? Brooks seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.